Call the meeting to order at six thirty. And we'll go in before we go into the public hearing. I just have a statement that we have to read for the Zoom meetings. This meeting will be recorded and made live. All attendees are muted upon entry. The host will unmute guests during the presentation, hearing our citizen comment agenda item. Questions during the meeting can be submitted in the chat area to be addressed by the chair. Attendees noted hearing to the guidelines may be put on hold or removed from the removed by the host. Okay. We're going to start tonight with a public hearing. We're required by the Mass General Law for the Community Preservation Act to hold a public hearing once a year. That's what this is. We're going to start with a presentation, then we'll have a brief question and answer and public input. Okay, first for the presentation, going to call Jennifer Golson of J M Golson, who's our consultant. She put together a room and we'll give her a presentation. Jen?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Am I?
Josh to to share the screen.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm looking at that right now and it it's not looking quite right. It's giving me some error messages, although it does look like it's an active link for me. So I'm not sure, Josh, am I a co-host?
Yeah.
Oh, here we go. I'm sorry, what was that, Josh?
You should be outside the chair.
I should? Okay, let me try again. Hmm, I don't know, it's giving me an error, let me. I'll try, I'll try it, but it has the triangle with the exclamation mark in it. But it does say this is my PowerPoint, so let's see if this works. Uh, no, I don't think this is working.
While you're working on that, I think what we're gonna do, this is Carlton, I'm the vice chair. We're gonna listen to the presentation and I think Gina said we'll open it up for Q and A. You can either send it to the chat. Or you can raise your hand, there's a function underneath the reactions that there's has a on your lower right, there's a thing that says raise hand. If you raise the hand there, someone, somebody, one of us will find it and let you know that you're unmuted.
Okay, I think what I need to do is I'm exporting this to make a PDF and I'm gonna share it with Gina or Carlton, one of you or Josh, because it's not working on my screen.
Okay.
So if I, I'm gonna share a link with you, Dropbox link, because it's a big file, so I don't think I can email it. But I'll email you the Dropbox link. So if you wanna give me just a couple of minutes, I have to do a couple of things in order to make that happen.
Okay, well, Jen is doing that and hopefully Josh can open it. I'm not familiar or I'm familiar with it, but not as much as Josh for Dropbox things. While we're waiting for that, just a a quick hands nod, whatever. How many of you are familiar with the Community Preservation Act, Community Preservation? As as it applies to Bridgewater?
Use your hand.
Okay, good. Quite a few. Okay. Okay, as as Jen said, it's a big file, so it might take a couple of minutes to to get to send.
While we're waiting, go ahead.
Nope, that's fine, go ahead, Carlton.
While we're waiting, we have the lead writer of the Comprehensive Master Plan Update with us, Alexa. I'm going to point you out, you know me, but she's here to listen and and she's in the final stages of getting the draft ready. And so hopefully, if there's some new ideas that come up here, they can find their way into that draft, maybe. Am I right?
Yeah, well, I also, yeah, just wanna kind of hear what's going on and make sure I'm not leaving out any important details with your current goings on, so.
Thank you, sorry about putting you on the spot.
Oh, that's fine.
I I saw you and I thought everybody should know that we've got somebody that can really put words to action or action to words or something like that.
Great, thanks, nice to meet you, Alexis, nice to have you here, Jen?
Thank you.
Um, Gina, I just want you to know, I did just send a link to Josh, so Josh, did you get that Dropbox link?
Yep, I'm in the process of opening it.
Perfect, okay.
Great. Okay, we have a a good crowd here, so I'm hoping to get after the presentation, I'm hoping to get lots of good input from from you folks. So like they used to say, put your thinking caps on.
Gina.
Josh.
Would you be, so this is actually really easy to open. But if I go full screen with it, I won't be able to admit people and take minutes.
Oh.
Can I do it as a co-host?
Yeah, you should be able to do it as well.
You want me just to send the same link to Carlton then?
Yeah, cuz if I have to do full screen, I'm trying to actually access everything else.
All right, sorry, folks, for these technical problems, I'm not sure why I'm not able to share. It it was definitely authorized for me to share, but there's something going on with my computer, I think. Okay, Carlton, I sent it to you in the chat.
So I should expect it to come into my.
In the chat, I sent it to you in the chat through Zoom.
Outlook. In the chat. I'll get there.
Okay. And when we close the public hearing, we're going to have a quick, regular Community Preservation Meeting, but you're all welcome to stay for that, true?
You know, Gina, while we're waiting, we might as well ad lib a little bit. It might be nice for everyone to meet the CPC members and hear a little bit about what they represent, how long they've been on the CPC and sort of what they have experienced in their time being involved in the in the CPC. Does that sound like a good idea?
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Okay.
Oh, Steve, you're ordering your head, you wanna start?
Sure. Hi, everyone, I'm, everyone can hear me, okay, right? Excellent, yeah, my name's Steve Rogan, I'm the, I represent the Historical Commission on the CPC. I've been on the Historical Commission, I'm coming on to just about three years coming in a few months. I've been on the CPC for about two of those three years. And I'm the my, the main things that we've been working with, the things that I've really had been been interested in is we have the Miguel Wayne School, which is that that project should be converting the Miguel Wayne School into apartments, but still keeping it its historic designation. Been very excited, been very happy to work on that project. Also, the CPC, as you will find out in other things that we've done, bringing money to purchase land for Stiles and Hart Parkland. But no, I am happy to bring the historical aspect of water to the CPC. So I'm glad to be here and anyone has any questions, I'm very happy to try to answer them.
Great, thank you. Next, who wants to jump in?
Carlton, hi, I'm the vice chair. I've been on the board since July of committee since July of 2019 and I'm very interested in the housing issues.
Okay, Jane?
I'm Jane Guarino and I'm on the, I'm on the planning board. Been on CPC very a short time, probably since 2019. So I'm really still kind of learning what's going on with CPC and what it does and how we can benefit the town.
Okay, Bill?
Can you, can you hear me? I'm having trouble with my computer, oh, good, cuz there's no picture, can can you see me? That's important.
But we can hear you.
Okay, I I don't know why you cut. Anyway, well, you can hear me, I'm I'm William Smith. I am the Chair of the Historic District Commission in Bridgewater, a position that I'm ashamed to say I have had for almost thirty years. And I'm a new member, however, of the CPC in Bridgewater since January of 2020. I have to say that I've really enjoyed my short tenure on the CPC, learning more about the town. I remember when the CPA was passed, I don't know, ten or fifteen years ago, I guess, maybe. Someone said that it's the best thing to happen to the town of Bridgewater in our lifetime and I agree with that wholeheartedly. If we just look around and see all the wonderful projects that the CPC has funded through various revenues in the town and through the state. It's remarkable, we we're experiencing a kind of Renaissance in the downtown area with the restoration of the Town Hall and the Academy Building and just a myriad of wonderful projects around town, which never could have been funded without the CPA. I bring a little bit of knowledge of of architecture and history. I'm I'm a specialist in Victorian literature and history, so I know a lot about nineteenth century architecture, our downtown area is, of course, primarily a nineteenth century architectural area. You know, the town's much older than that. And the Historic District Commission attempts to to preserve the historicity of the district, which consists of the common and the buildings adjacent to the common, so we regulate signage and any change.
I I don't want, I hate to interrupt.
Yeah.
And I find what you're saying very interesting, but just.
That's fine, that's that's.
The second time.
That's enough.
I was just gonna move on, but it is very, very interesting what you were saying, thank you. Um, Harry? Harry's here, right? Where's Harry? Okay, Harry, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, well, while Harry's unmuted himself.
Here I am.
Okay, Harry.
I'm Harry Bailey, I'm the Vice Chair of Conservation Commission and I've been on Community Preservation and the Conservation since 2010.
You get a call from the meeting.
Gone through many projects through the years. I'm also a past Chair of Community Preservation, I'll make my in short, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm the the final one that's here tonight from the CPC, I'm Gina Gaston, the chairperson. I've been on CPC for, I don't know how long, a lot of years. I represent the Paxton Recreation Department, previously, you know, it's recreation department. We had a name change with the the charter, charter former government. I've seen a lot of projects done in town. They fall under everything, but we have four categories that you you learn about Jen's presentation. I've seen projects done in in each of them and hope to see a lot more. Okay, I think that's it for CPC members that are here.
I think we're ready to go, Gina, if you want me to take it over now.
Sounds good to me.
All right, great, thanks, everyone, for your patience, I know that that was a little awkward trying to get this up and running, but we're here now and thank you, Carlton, for sharing the slide, yeah, you can go ahead and change it. So tonight, we're gonna run through this as quickly as we can, but at the same time, we wanna not go too quickly, because we have a lot of important information that we wanna share and then we wanna really prime, prime the pump to get your ideas for what you'd like to see funded with CPA in the next, in the next few years. And really, what we we're gonna do tonight is just give some brief overview of CPA, both in general and then also in middle, in, I'm sorry, in Bridgewater. And then we're gonna be looking at what's eligible for CPA funds with a caveat, though, because it's it actually is, there's a lot of gray area in CPA. And we're not gonna get into all the nuances and the ins and outs, but if you have a specific project and you're not sure it's eligible, you know, when we get to the, when we get to the kind of the open comment period, please do ask and I'd be happy to try to clarify to the extent that I'm able to. We'll we'll review the the Community Preservation Committee created a plan last year, Community Preservation Plan, and it has a number of goals for each of the four categories, so we'll review those. And then what we wanna do is look back at some completed projects, look at some projects in process and then start to think about ideas for the future. And that's generally it, you can go ahead, Carlton. So as an overview, the CPA, Community Preservation Act, and I'm gonna use two abbreviations, CPA and CPC, and CPC is just the committee, CPA is the actual act. And so it's a tool that's completely voluntary, optional for a community to opt into. And it was created in 2000, although the first communities that really adopted it started to get going in 2001. And it allows communities to generate, and I'm gonna tell you where the money comes from in a minute, but allows communities to generate revenue that's set aside from your regular operating funds. And it's set aside for four types of projects, historic preservation, outdoor recreation, community housing and open space. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about each of those four areas, but that's kind of the general, the the highest level you can explain CPA at next. And so one thing you should know, and this comes up all the time when people ask about what's eligible for CPA funds, it's really meant to involve real property. It's not so much about education and, you know, guided tours and things that may also be good for the community. It's really more about bricks and mortar and real estate and and real property. And when I say real property, I don't just mean land, although that is a big part of what CPA can fund in terms of preservation, conservation and then new construction. But I also mean property like documents and artifacts and things like that, real, real. And I should also say that it's both public and private property. With with a bunch of caveats about, you might say, how can, you know, town funds be used to fund private property? We can get into that a little bit more, but as long as there's a clear public benefit, then community town funds can be used to fund private property. And I'll give you an example, you could fund, let's say, a privately owned historic building. Maybe it's a building that's open to the public or at least certain times of the year and you would probably get a deed restriction saying it can never be torn down and anything that happens to the exterior of that building needs to be reviewed by the town. So that would be an example of a private property that could have CPA funds to help preserve it in return for public benefits. And if you do have questions, if I say something, you know, it's a little different when we're in the room together and I can see people like scratching their head or looking at me like I have no idea what you're saying. If if I'm, you know, not making sense or you want a little more clarification, feel welcome to put something into the chat or raise your hand. I may not be able to see you, but I'm sure Gina or Carlton or someone else on the call here can let me know if somebody wants my attention in the middle of the presentation, that's fine with me. Okay, next. Are you there, Carlton? Carlton, are you there, can you forward? Yeah, great, thanks. Okay, so.
Sorry, I was checking the chat room.
That's okay, so the only real caveat I have to what I just said a minute ago, that it's really about property and preserving property and creating community housing. There's one category that allows something the statute calls support. And it's only in the housing category. And so that's a little bit softer, that can be creating, let's say, a special program that's a local program that can help first time home buyers or can help create a local rental subsidy program. You know, you can do other things under that, you can hire a housing coordinator for the town, someone that would work for the town focused just on local housing initiatives. And so there's a bunch of different things you could do under support, under housing, that you actually can't do under those other categories, just because of the way the statute was written. Next. Carlton, you can go ahead and forward. Yep, great, okay, so this is just a map, it's, you know, every election cycle, more communities adopt CPA. The ones in green are the ones that have adopted Community Preservation Act across the state. The ones in orange are, I'm sorry, green is towns and orange are cities. There's another version of this map that shows who's had it on the ballot. Or who will have it on the ballot, but this one is showing towns and cities. And so you can see a good, a good portion of the state has now approved hundred and eighty-six communities, that's fifty-three percent of the state's municipalities. But if you look at the population, it's in a lot of communities with a kind of a higher population. So it's sixty-five percent of the state's population actually now lives in the CPA community. There's been over two point five billion dollars raised and over twelve thousand eight hundred projects approved across the state. So it's made a huge difference. I've been working with CPA communities since about 2002, when I was hired by the City of Newton to manage their CPA program. I was one of the first community preservation managers in the state. And since, and that was back in the day when the state trust fund distributions matched a hundred percent of every local dollar you collected. And since then, it's really grown exponentially. Next. So one thing I'd like you all to know and be clear about is there is a minimum spending requirement under the CPA. So you can see that this little donut chart shows that ten percent of the of the funds need to be either spent or set aside for later spending for housing, ten percent for historic preservation and ten percent for open space and recreation combined. They combine those two categories into a minimum ten percent. But the rest of the funds, the other seventy percent can be allocated really for any project in any of those categories. So there's a lot of local discretion about how those funds are spent and what they're spent on and and where do where do the bulk of the of the funding, you know, where do you, some communities specifically target certain areas of the CPC, maybe CPA rather, you know, maybe they target housing as being the most important need in the community and they'll they'll very purposefully spend more money in one category than in another category. But that's completely a local option, it's really up to the community. And then you should know that you don't have to spend the five percent of for admin funds, but you can spend up to five percent for administrative funds. Next. So in Bridgewater, the 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 voters in the town adopted CPA in 2005. The money started to roll in in 2006. Sixty-two percent of the voters supported adoption at that time. And since then, it's raised over ten million dollars and that's including both the local funds and the state. So Carlton, if you go to the next slide, you can see how that's broken out over the years. So the the Bridgewater voters adopted a two percent local property tax surcharge. It does include exemptions, so low income households as well as low and moderate income senior households of sixty years and over are exempt, as well as the first hundred thousand dollars of taxable value of residential property. So those are the exempts exemptions that Bridgewater adopted. And the total amount raised since adoption from that local property tax surcharge was seven point four two million dollars so far. And then the state has a state trust fund distribution. Those funds come from a bunch of fees at the Registry of Deeds and and it varies from year to year as the CPCs in the past have been painfully aware, because it started to dip pretty low after being at a hundred percent for the, you know, first five or six years. And you can see, actually, but before we go to the next slide, I just wanna point out, the total raised by the state for Bridgewater has been about two point seven million, but if you go to the next slide, Carlton, what I wanna, you know, point out is that Governor Baker did sign a special increase last year that guarantees more funding is going to be available. And if you go to the next slide, you could see this is Bridgewater's annual state trust fund distribution since adoption. So I just captured, this is from the Community Preservation Coalition website. If anybody wants to see this data for themselves, they can just go to communitypreservation.org and you can look up any town, actually in the state that has CPA. But if you look up Bridgewater, this is what you'll see, and this is each year that the state has given funding to Bridgewater. And this is the amount, this is the percentage against the local surcharge. And you can see in the first couple of years, Bridgewater didn't adopt right away. So I think it was the first five or six years of the early adopters got that hundred percent cuz there weren't a lot of communities that had adopted at that point. And then as more and more communities opted in and, you know, it also is, it changes with filings. How many filings are at the Registry of Deeds? So in markets where people are refinancing and buying a lot, there's a lot, there are a lot more documents, so the fees collect. And in the recession, for example, the fees went down. And so you can see that these fluctuations are based on those two things, how many communities have adopted and what have been the collections at the registry to create this state trust fund. And then they have this somewhat complicated formula about how communities get allocated these funds. Okay, next. So you may be wondering just more basics, you know, if if you have an idea, how do you apply? And so a lot of the times, ideas come from citizens, from residents, from community members. Other times, ideas comes from the town, town departments or town staff or town boards and commissions. And any of those entities could potentially apply for CPA funds, but here are the steps. So first, there's an idea, someone in the community has an idea. Then you have to figure out, well, who owns this property, cuz CPA is primarily about property, right? And so let's say you want to create a playground somewhere. You have to figure out, well, who owns that property, is it owned by the town? And if it's owned by the town, who has custody, what entity in town has custody of that property? And then you would need to go to that entity and and tell them your idea and see if they can buy into it. So you cannot submit a CPA application unless you have agreement from the owner if it involves property. And then the third step, there's a application. It's pretty straightforward, but it's also comprehensive and it gives the Community Preservation Committee all the information that it needs to figure out, is this project eligible? And if it's eligible, then is it a good idea? And so it's a, there's a two-step application process, you can, you don't have to go through the whole, you know, the whole effort of putting together a very detailed packet with support letters and all these things if you're not even sure your idea is eligible. So first you can see, you know, is this even eligible? And then the CPC will give you some advice. And if it is eligible, then you can go ahead and complete the full project, again with sign off from the property owner. The CPC then has the, you know, probably multiple meetings in reality, reviews and votes on a recommendation. And then the ultimate decision goes to town council. Town council is restricted, though, to only vote on things the CPC has recommended favorably. So if the CPC does not recommend favorably on an application, then it does not go to town council for funding. Now, the town council can, they can do one of three things when they have a CPC recommendation that's favorable. They can, one, just approve it as is, they can, two, approve it at a reduced amount. Or they can deny it. Next. Okay, so let's get into eligibility and I'm a. Okay, so let's get into eligibility. And I'm, I do see some things in the chat, but just so people know, I'm not looking at the chat. So Carlton, Gina, anybody, let me know if there's something I should stop to answer. All right, go ahead, keep going. All right. So this is a handy little chart that's on the Community Preservation Coalition website. It's that same website I gave you before, communitypreservation.org. And it just gives you kind of a cheat sheet. This is based on a matrix that the Department of Revenue put together. The DOR's matrix is a little more complicated. This one is on the Coalition's website and it's pretty straightforward. And it basically takes the statute and boils it down to these five words or phrases along the left column. And for each of the four CPA categories, it tells you what you can do. I'm not going to get into all the definitions of these. There are a lot of ins and outs about, well, what does rehab mean? And how is that different than preservation and what's included in support and, and all of these things. But all I'm going to tell you is that there's open space, you can essentially do everything except support, support you can only do for housing. But in open space, you can acquire property to protect it. So you can acquire private property to protect it. You can create open space. Some people might be scratching their heads. Well, what do you mean create open space? I'm not God. So you create open space, maybe by tearing something down. So some communities, I think on the Cape have done this where they bought like an old motel or something and tore it down and created, you know, land back either in its natural state, or they may have created recreation land. So that's what that means. You can preserve open space. So preserve technically means to protect from harm. So what some communities have done is like removal of invasive species is an example of preserving open space where you're protecting the resource from harm. And then rehab or restore. And there's a few examples of that. I would say maybe not as many. The examples we see a lot for rehab and restore come for more historic preservation as well as for recreation. So I'll give you some examples of that. And I should just also point out that there are some caveats here. You can see in the, in the parentheses under yes, under open space rehab and under housing rehab, you can only do a rehab project or restoration project for open space or housing, if you actually created that resource initially through CPA funds. So that's very limited and it's actually not very often you could use rehab on either open space or housing. So for historic, you can acquire private property to preserve it. There's a good example of this, the Keith Homestead, the town of Bridgewater bought the Keith Homestead. They acquired that property to preserve it, put a deed restriction on and then sold it to a private property, a private homeowner with the deed restriction. You can't really create historic resources. They're either there or they're not. So that's a no. You can preserve them. And then you can rehab. So what rehab means in the case of historic resources that I think is a relevant example is, let's say you have a historic resource like the Academy Building. And you want to make sure that it's handicap accessible meets American Disabilities Act and the state codes for disabilities. You can rehab that building as you did to create handicap accessibility. So that would be an example. You can also bring other things about the historic resource up to code, like you can bring the electric up to code or other, you know, health and safety issues, bring those up to code. You can do that for both public and private historic resources. As long as for the private, there is a clear public benefit. And then for recreation, I think we went over most of these already can acquire land to create recreation, outdoor only. You can create new recreation, including new parks, playgrounds, trails. And then you can preserve or rehab existing recreation. And that's all outdoor recreation. And for housing, you can do all of those things, except you can't rehab or restore unless you created that initially with CPA funds. So this is a nice cheat sheet. I'm going to give you a bunch of examples now. So let's go to the next slide. So a few things you should know, there are some prohibitions for what you cannot use CPA funds for. So one is you can't supplant funds that the town needs to, 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 under normal circumstances, the town would pay for it. So an example has come up. A lot of communities were funding preservation of town clerk records. And it came up, you know, probably not that recently, but I learned about it relatively recently that technically the town clerk is responsible to preserve those town records anyway. And so you can't really ask for CPA funds to do something that the town is responsible to do anyway. So that's an example of what supplanting funds means. It's supposed to go above and beyond what the town could normally do with its own funding. You also can't just do regular maintenance, ordinary maintenance. And you also can't pay for operating expenses. You can't fund artificial turf. You can fund other things for fields like the irrigation or lighting or, you know, purchase land to create fields, but you just can't pay for the, any artificial turf. You can't have horse or dog racing facilities and you also can't use it for stadium, gymnasium or other structure. Next. So for community housing, what I like to do is just show people, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of misunderstanding and misconceptions around what is affordable housing and who are those people? Those people are mostly us, is what I've, I've learned over the many years I've been doing housing. And so if you look at the income qualifications to, to be eligible for an affordable housing unit. There's a couple of thresholds for income that I've given you on this little matrix at the bottom of the slides. One is low income, which would be for folks who, you know, if this is Greek to you, don't worry about it. You don't need to know all these details, but that would be technically eighty percent of the area median income. And if you're a person living alone and you earn annually, an annual income of fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars or less, you could potentially qualify for affordable housing. If you're, and it changes by the number of people living in your household. So I just gave a couple of examples. If you are living with three other people, so you're a household of four people and you make seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty or less, then you could be potentially eligible for affordable housing. Now I put another income threshold here. You can see the other one is called moderate income and that's a hundred percent of the area median income. And that's because this Community Preservation Act allows Bridgewater, allows communities that have it to fund using CPA funds. Housing that's for incomes higher than just that low income. So you can actually fund up to these other incomes. A single person living alone, sixty-six thousand six hundred and forty would qualify for what the statute calls community housing. It just means that moderate income of, of the area median income or less. So if you have any questions, I went over that very quickly. Just, you know, let me know. And we already went over a lot of these other bullets. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So CPA funds can also support a housing trust and Bridgewater actually adopted a housing trust a number of years ago. CPA funds are eligible to to be allocated to the housing trust to help them with different initiatives. So housing trusts are ideal to, to really further local programs and local initiatives. And the real key to a housing trust is that it has powers, it has the authority to buy and sell real estate. So it doesn't need to go through the whole process of going, you know, like a, another, any other entity would need to do in the town. It doesn't need to go before town, town council, if it needs approval to buy something. So this is really great to do things like a buy down program or a first time home buyer program where there may be, let's say there's a condo or, you know, a modest sized, single family home on the market and the trust could potentially buy that home or that condo pretty quickly. And put a deed restriction on it, maybe do some rehabilitation on the unit, bring it up to code and then sell it with a deed restriction to a first time home buyer. So that's an example of something the trust can do. I'm happy to talk more about trusts. But really trusts enable the town to make really timely decisions to create local, local housing. And so that's one thing that CPA funds can fund. Next. So let's talk about, oh, this is an example. And actually Steve had already mentioned the McElwain School. And CPA funds, significant amount of CPA funds went into to help create this project at the McElwain School. And you should know also, there was CPA funds used years ago. I actually did the, the National Register nomination. The town has been thinking about what to do with this building for a long time. And the town knew that if you got this listed on the National Register, it could be eligible for historic tax credits. It could help to preserve the building and also help to make a development more feasible, like the one that's there now. And so CPA funds were not only used for, you know, the actual housing project and then the, the pocket park that's going to be there and preserving the building, but it was also used to create that National Register nomination listing years and years ago through it's, the town's forethought. Next. So the next category is historic preservation. And sometimes people think historic preservation is only about buildings and that's sort of the most common thing people think of. But the CPA statute looks at buildings, structures, meaning like bridges and things. Vessel, like a boat. Other real property document and artifacts are the specific things that the statute listed. Listen, they need to be in order to qualify, they need to be listed on the state register of historic places or determined by Bridgewater's local historic commission to be significant locally. And so we went through these already. These are the verbs I showed in that matrix, acquire, preserve, restore and rehab. So you can go to the next slide. Yep, that's good. We talked a little bit about the Keith Homestead. And this was the, the property that I mentioned that the town used CPA funds to, to purchase and really save it from this subdivision that was being proposed at the time. The house would have been torn down and it would have created however many lots are shown in that, that little picture, but instead you have the house preserved and the open space as well, all preserved. Next. Open space eligibility. So open space is not just what you may think of as open space, meaning, you know, undeveloped land in its natural state. It also includes wellfields, land to protect aquifers and watersheds, agricultural land. And then it lists grasslands, forests, scenic, scenic vistas and land for passive recreation, like hiking trails through the woods and things like that. And so what's eligible, these are back to those verbs, acquire, create and preserve open space and natural resources. Next. So here's an example, the Marine Needs Farm was an acquisition of a restriction, a conservation restriction to protect the farmland. And this was a joint project that the CPC was really actively involved, not just in funding, but really in putting this, this, this project together, working with multiple entities, including the Trust for Public Land and the Wildlands Trust. And then it also got a state land grant to help fund that. So that's an example of open space and that would be agricultural preservation. Next. So outdoor recreation eligibility. You can, these are back to those verbs, acquire, create, preserve and rehab land for outdoor recreation. And I like to put in that word outdoor, because sometimes people get confused and they think they can, you know, do, do something else. And it's, it's very clear that this is about outdoor and it's about land. It's not about, you know, buildings and facilities. Next. So here's an example, the Styles and Hart Expansion. The town did use CPA funds to acquire five acre parcel on Broad Street for better access to the larger Styles and Hart Conservation Area. Next. Okay, so now I'm going to go very briefly over the goals. Some of you may already be familiar with these. They were presented, the CPC at their public hearing last year presented these last February. And this is just a very quick synopsis. And these are the current CPC goals. So we're within this five year timeframe right now. Next. So for housing, there are four goals. And this is really, the goals are meant to kind of narrow and prioritize all the things that you could do with CPA funds that are eligible into a select set of priorities based on the community feedback that the CPC received in the process of putting together their community preservation plan. And one thing we'd love to hear from you, you know, we like to each year, when you do the public hearing is to just test, are these things still relevant? And what kind of ideas do you have that could be good projects to meet these goals? And so one is housing for older adults in the community. Reuse and concert and conversion of existing structures. So an example of that is like I, I said, the trust could do where it could buy a condo or buy a modest, single family house, convert that to an affordable unit. Three variety of affordable housing options for young individuals and families. And long-term affordability through improving housing quality. Next. Historic preservation. Accessibility, public accessibility use and awareness of historic resources. Historic artifacts and documents, so not just buildings. Having strong preservation protections. Looking at preserving historic commercial facades. And also outdoor historic places and monuments. Next. For open space and passive recreation, continuing to preserve Bridgewater's farms and agricultural lands. And really helping farmers so they can really maintain those farms over the long term. Two, preserving existing open space and recreation facilities. So really focusing in on how can we, how can we look at our existing facilities and improve those? Water resources and river corridors. And integrate open space throughout Bridgewater. So to make sure that you're really looking at the network of open space. Next. Active recreation goals. Really restoring and preserving existing parks, playgrounds and recreation facilities. So making sure that there are the needed improvements and accessibility improvements as well as safety. Two is public safety and access to recreation areas. Three, comprehensive bike and walking network in the community. Four, water access and use of water resources. And then five facilities for seniors and high need individuals, recreation facilities. Next. Okay, so now let's take a look back at just a, just a handful of completed projects. This is not everything. Go ahead, Carlton. So really the, the main point here is that CPA has been used and invested really to improve and preserve a lot of resources and there are signs that go up and different, you know, ways that you can find out about what has actually been preserved. But I suspect that it, it would be, it would, I guess I would say it would not be surprising if many residents in the community did not realize how much the CPA has done. So the next slide, you can see just a handful of those projects. I talked about some of them, the Keith Homestead, the Marine Needs Farm, but there are so many others. You know, helping to fund Music Alley, the Mount Prospect Cemetery, the Memorial Building, the Crescent Street softball fields. And you know, you can see them here. And if you go to the next slide, these are some things that are in progress, sorry, in process right now. And don't be, you know, offended if, you know, I did not put these in order, they're not in order of priority. Go ahead. So there's a proposal to fund pickleball courts. I only learned about what pickleball was about five years ago or so. So I think it's, and these would be near, right near the senior center, you can see on this little map here. Next. The McElwain School, we already mentioned. Next. The Central Square Congregational Church received funding to do exterior preservation work. Next. And then these are some ideas. We wanted to kind of prime the pump to hear your ideas with some ideas that we've already either heard through CPC members or others. And then we want to, you know, the next piece is really the hearing from you. So next. So, and actually I may want, actually Carlton and Steve, a few people offered slides and I want to make sure that we do these projects justice, because I think you probably know a lot more about what's intended in these than I do. So Carlton, would you mind, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you mind just speaking briefly about the Tool Memorial Park? And the idea to connect to Murray Needs?
Happy to do this. About six months ago or so, we determined and found out that we have town owned land. It was land given to the town for a park in Rec area. And that is in the lower, I don't know if my cursor's showing, but that's in the lower left corner with the red circle. That has some wetlands around it, but it also has about three acres of upland type area. I will state that the fire committee, fire station committee is looking at that piece parcel plus I will state that the fire, uh, committee, fire station committee is looking at that piece parcel plus the one down here on the lower part in green and one other for potential future fire station. At the same time, we thought about how could we also get recreation out on that side of the town, uh, children's playground or something. So that concept is in play. But as we were thinking about it, we also knew access to the Murray Needs Farm uh, is up in this lower area here and it's very limited in parking, et cetera. So we began to think about how could we use the parking that could be here if that's becomes a fire station or that small parking lot that's already there. And I, I will backtrack for a minute. The Tool Memorial Park was funded by private, the, the gift that was given to the town. It's now worth over a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, unless the markets went down. And, and that's available for park and recreation in that area. So the it's cash. And, and so that, what the white line is my concept of potentially having an access from that park. A, a walkway recreational stroll over here, uh, through this private property, which we would have to work on. And into the west portion of the Murray Needs Farm, which has trails and very uh, uh, well done. And that would be about a three mile round trip for hikers, et cetera. So that's the concept that's uh, there's no proposals yet, but that's a concept where we could potentially, um, the town could ask for money. Uh, it could be co-funded by that account that's already have cash in it, et cetera. That's all I'll say about that right now. It's just, it's a concept right now. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Carlton. Um, that's great. Oh, and actually while you're on Carlton, you might as well talk about Jenny Leonard unless someone else wants to.
Probably happy to do it since I put the slides together. When the, uh, development that is over here, I forget the name of it, was authorized by the planning board. The planning board had the wisdom to require a parking area over here. About right here in, on the greens, left, right side. That would be parking for public and then access trail up into the Murray Needs Park. So that park is town owned. There's on the books and a requirement for parking for that. And the next stage would be what do we want to develop there? That's a, what's, I, it's a Jenny Leonard Park, I'm sorry. But that's, that's the concept there.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next slide. Okay. Um, so this is a, a bit more general, but we listed a few specific sites. I know that the the community, including Kitty and others in the community have been working on this idea of the Nuketussit Greenway for a lot, you know, many, many years. And, um, there's a number of key sites and some of these, uh, overlap with historic preservation. You'll see the iron, uh, the iron works next time. There's a, the chat thing there, but I don't think it's about what I'm talking about right now. And so you can see on this map that there's a number of the sites that we listed in the bullets kind of highlighted. Um, just as preservation and rehab and trail access as well. And I don't know if there's any other points about this that I'm missing in that kind of general overview. Um, I don't know if any CPC member want to chime in with anything else on that.
Jen?
Gina?
Okay, we do have a question in chat for our, back to the Murray Needs. Janet Hansen is asking where we're talking for. I think that's talking for the packing at the Murray Needs. Was that your question, Janet? Just to make sure I'm saying it right.
Yeah. Yes, that's what I'm asking.
So, so what, what we're suggesting here on this plan, there is a small parking area that was installed back in the, uh, early two thousands, the hi, the highway department was funded by that cash, uh, money that was, and there's a small parking lot that was recently cleared. But if the fire station actually develops here, I think there's enough sufficient land to actually have some public parking there for access. That doesn't work, we're going to have to work out something else.
You're talking about a tool park?
Right. I think Janet was asking for Murray Needs with, is packing.
Yeah. And I was, I was just saying that, that, that lower right tool park is where the parking might be. And people would then have to walk up that trail uh, to the upper left and, and the white line into the, uh, Murray Needs, uh, farm properties.
Is there only street parking there now Carlton from Murray Needs?
There's, there's at Murray Need, me needs, it's only street parking and you have to go across a, the stone fence.
Great. Let's go down to where, I'm not sure where we left off here, past the Nuketussit Greenway.
I'll move it down here.
Jen, you were asking about, um, other sites that weren't on that, that you didn't have listed on the left?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think the only one, what, what you're actually showing here on the left is the, um, Styles and Heart, you didn't have it on the list on, on your left, on the next.
Oh, got it. Right. Okay, good.
But yeah, no, that, that one's going to be one of the, uh, I guess, one of the gems on the, on the, the necklace of the, the Greenway.
Okay, cool. Actually, Steve, while you're unmuted, do you want to talk about Iron Works Park?
Sure. Um, right now, um, there, the Iron Works Park, if no, people aren't aware of it, it is, um, located on High Street, um, uh, right near, um, right near the, uh, the town, uh, maintenance facilities. Um, it's a very historic park. It was the first industry. Uh, iron industry in Bridgewater was one of the, the first iron, um, factories in the, in the country. And what you're looking at on the right, that's the, um, storage shed, which is actually on the National Register. As well. Um, so the last remaining structure of the Iron Works, um, facilities, um, went through the, uh, um, Lizelle, um, Perkins, Iron Works, it was, um, Bridgewater, um, Iron Works, and it was also Stanley Iron Works. So you might see some signs called, it's a Stanley Iron Works. Um, well, there's a, um, the state, uh, the federal government is looking at, um, potentially removing the dam and the, um, High Street Bridge, which is the bridge right in front of, uh, Lincoln Athletic Association. Um, and what we're looking at, um, if those are to be removed, in removing historic structures, it would be, what mitigation factors can we do? Um, which could be, um, interpretive signage. So that's something that, um, CPA funds could potentially be used for is to have, is to, um, pay for the, um, interpretive signage that goes into the, into the park. Um, it's beautiful, beautiful park and, and, and we, we, it would be a great use of funds to maintain that history.
Steve, I might add. Um, if I could add just one more thing, that is its own, there's an industrial corridor. It's on the National Historic Register that contains this park also. And the bridge, the High Street Bridge potentially was first installed in the early seventeen hundreds. And that bridge, um, has now been written up for the historic, uh, National Historic Register. Uh, by the proponents that, uh, want to remove the bridge and the dam and the bridge. Uh, but this has huge significance. Uh, I would say this though, that if you're on the National Historic Register, it doesn't stop any destruction or removal of historic, uh, uh, part, uh, buildings and structures, but it does then require some kind of mitigation. And that's what, um, the Net Hawk Committee is looking, uh, at potential mitigation measures, which is where Steve uh, led in with potentially having money from CPC to, to support that mitigation. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Can you go to the next one? I think this might be Steve's as well. Steve, you want to talk about the common?
Sure. Um, well, the town common is actually, I, I, I'm not, I forget if you have a slide of, um,
Yeah, I have the town hall as, as the next slide.
Okay. Um, well, um, the town common, obviously it's, um, the, that's, it's center of Bridgewater. It's, um, uh, the hi, the history of just being like town green, it's, um, very, um, very important. But one of the, um, buildings that's just, just off the, just on the common, the old town hall. Prior to everything moving to the academy building, um, the town offices were in the old town hall. Um, and since once everything moved, that how that building has been empty. It's just a, there may be some file storage, but it, it's been unused. Um, well, if you, last year, um, we were able to, um, write, put up, put a, um, a proposal for a grant through the, uh, cultural facilities fund to for feasibility study to turn it into a cultural center. And we were awarded that grant. We had a sixty thousand dollar grant to, um, look at the, um, potential reuse of this building as a cultural art center so that, um, potentially Music Alley, which is on the left side, which is only a summer event, that's something that you can bring inside and have events all year round. You can have, um, either the, the upstairs, which people don't, um, probably aren't aware of. It's not, it was an auditorium and it still is an auditorium. You can have, um, performances up there. You can have gallery, you can have galleries, you can have workshops in the first floor. It's, it's so much potential. Um, and this is something that in the past CPA funds were used to rehabilitate the, um, exterior of the, the building. But potentially in the future, if we, if the, um, study of you turning into a cultural center progresses and it's something that, um, the town is able to do. Um, CPA funds would be a, a great, um, use of funds to support that. And that could be, um, re, and that could be the rehabilitation, it could be interpretive, uh, signage, but, um, I think it's, um, a very exciting potential use of CPA funds that in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you, Steve. Um, so the next one is really just opening up for questions, Gina. So, I don't know if you, you know, we can keep this slide up, um, as long as you want, but I know people also like to see each other better than they can when the presentation is up. So, you know, we just have some generalized questions, um, but this is a, a public hearing. So I think Gina, you can kind of lead, lead this more than I can, but generally the questions are, you know, what are your ideas? And, you know, looking at the, the four different categories, what do you see as the priorities? And what, what kind of projects and initiatives can you think of that could be funded in the next number of years, um, under each of the CPA categories? And I don't know, Gina, do you want Carlton to keep this up on the screen?
No, you can take it down. I have, or people saw the questions. We do have one question in chat though from Alexis. She wants to know what is the status of the write-up for the National Historic Registry designation for the bridge? Carlton, can you answer that?
Yeah, um, as far as I know, the consultants for the, um, I'm just trying to stop there. As far as I know, the consultants that are working with, actually the federal government leads the mitigation efforts because of the historic nature. And I have seen a, probably think draft final write-up on that. Uh, uh, the bridge area. I don't know, I guess we could request it from the state. It's public knowledge. So it's, it, the status is, I think it's been submitted to the mass, uh, macros, the Massachusetts historic folks.
Okay, great. Is there like a sense of how long that, like, do you, a, any sense of when that will be a decision?
I don't know when that will be done, but I believe it's been fast tracked.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Carlton. Thank you, Alexis, for the question. Um, just to go in order of the question said, that Jen had up and first I want to thank Jen for a wonderful presentation. Um, it's very good. And I would like to thank the CPC members too for contributing thoughts and ideas and pictures to the, the conversation during the presentation. Thank you to everyone. Uh, the first question is, what do you want the CPA to fund regarding housing? If you have any thoughts on that. And if you do, you can either raise your hand or just write in chat or just speak out too. Just make sure you unmute yourself. Any thoughts on housing?
Gina, I raised my hand.
Okay.
Hi Gina. Uh, Gina, it's Matt, Matt Rushton from the town council. Uh, if I, hi, how you doing? Uh, good evening, everybody. And Jennifer, uh, excellent presentation. Um, I guess I'd first start by saying, um, as a resident of the community, I'm extremely proud of the work the CPA and the many members over the years and the things that they've accomplished for the town of Bridgewater. Although, um, a fairly progressive as a person and, uh, things such as the Broad Street Project, I like to see happen. Um, I'm also very concerned about saving the history of, uh, town and the many things that you've done. And of course, being involved in sports for many years, I, I recognize all of the projects and, and recreation as well. I, first to talk about housing, I did spend about eight years on the Housing Authority. Um, I never could really get this moving. Um, however, the Housing Authority owns, uh, several acres of land uh, behind Hemlock and would like to see the CPA and the Housing Authority work together to increase our low income elderly housing, if that is possible. Uh, in addition to that, we own a number of homes for low income families in the town of Bridgewater. As you can imagine, uh, it's a fairly expensive undertaking to maintain those. But part of my idea is, uh, you know, I really love the idea of the housing trust. And I don't know what the status of the housing trust or whether that's a subcommittee. Um, but I would love to see the housing trust ready to acquire low income property or abandoned properties that we could turn into low income housing. Um, so I'm not sure if that housing trust is ready to jump on a deal. Or whether it would be months in the making and potentially lose a real estate deal. But I don't think that we have enough housing in Bridgewater, particularly for low income. And so I just wanted to mention that under the housing option. Thank you.
Matt, to, to answer your question, we do have our, I don't want to call it a department, but we do have a housing trust committee, maybe is the, the better word, um, that has not been active. Uh, we have addressed that in the past with the town to, uh, get that up and running again. And maybe you as our, a town counselor could help us in that endeavor.
Gina, could I say something regarding the Affordable Housing Trust?
Sure.
This is Joan. This is Joan. Um, I am a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. And when it was first put together, we had quite a few meetings. Um, and then it kind of faded out after the McElwain situation. Um, but there wasn't a lot of discussion about buying, um, as Matt said, rundown properties or even some type of habitat humanity, Habitat of Humanity, um, coalition getting together and doing something like that. So I know that the trust had talked about it. It was on their agenda at one point to, um, look around for that, but I, as I said, we haven't had any more meetings since then. So.
Jen, uh, great. Could I ask Jennifer to respond to that because she's the housing expert?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, um, yeah, thanks Joan for chiming in on that. My understanding, you know, is that the, the town, like a, a, a first step, I would say is to make sure the board is fully appointed. And then once a board is fully appointed, a lot of trusts have had success if they create an action plan and figure out exactly what do they want to do? How much money do they need to do, you know, need to, to undertake these initiatives? What is the market even like? How much are houses going for? Um, are there tax, you know, foreclosed properties that could be transferred to the trust? There's lots of different ways to, to really get the trust going. But I think the first step is that, um, and Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the board is fully appointed at this point.
There are two members appointed.
There was, there was, I'm not sure if it was fully, fully, um, I'm sorry, appointed when I, we started the meetings, but I do know that a couple of people I believe have dropped off. So, and again, I haven't had no, um, conversation with anybody from the town regarding that trust. Um, so I guess I, I, I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah, and I do, I believe in terms of the process, usually in, in your form of government, I'd, I'd have, I'd have to defer to Michael Dutton just to en- ensure that this is correct. But I think that in your form of government, um, the town manager would appoint the board members and then the council would confirm the board members. Yeah.
Yes.
And he listed, if I could add to that, he lists himself as the chair. Um, and I don't know if he's ex officio as chair, uh, et cetera. But uh, we did get a very nice presentation that's up on the YouTube Bridgewater channel from Jen. Regarding uh what a housing trust should look like, that kind of thing. Uh, so we can send out the date of that meeting and where that in video. Her presentation was, I think it's worth everybody that's interested in housing and looking at that. And the final thing, as I mentioned when I introduced myself, I'm intensely interested in getting the housing together. The only money we've spent on housing is for the McTellway School uh to this state. It's not inconsequential, but that's coming from other pots besides housing. I'll let other, other questions. Matt, you have your uh hand up, are you ready?
Yes, thank you, Carlton. I I just wanted to add, as a member of the Town Council, um, obviously I have an emotional attachment to. Not only the residents, but the services that the Housing Authority is providing, particularly for low-income seniors. Um, I would be more than happy to move along appointments with the town manager. Uh, get it advertised to get that board fully up and operational.
Great, thanks. Thank you so much, Matt.
That, to be really clear, it's the Housing Trust that needs to be populated in terms of the committee or board. Housing Authority populated as far as I know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, and actually, as a result of Jen's presentation in this public hearing. Someone commented that they didn't realize housing was part of the CPA. So, that's good. Somebody learned something. Um, anything else on housing? Okay, our next question, where and what should we focus on for passive recreation projects? And where should we focus efforts to increase playgrounds, et cetera? Um, I think Monica Bentley had, had some. Questions or thoughts on this that she had written to me. Um, Monica can.
Yeah, um, I have visited all the parks in town except for the ones mentioned tonight that I didn't even know that they existed. Um, and finding Wyman's Meadow. You had to be detective. It took me half an hour to figure out with three different maps and all kinds of documents online to find out where it was. And when I got there, I wasn't even sure if that's what it was. Um, I would love to see street signage for all the parks, you know, something small like a one-way sign. Um, and trail markers. I got in there and got lost and didn't even know where they, you know, where or if a trail existed. And I did find a beautiful one. Um, you know, I've been to Tucker Wood and that one's got trail markers all through it and it's nicely maintained. And the steward is doing a fantastic job. I'd like to see something consistent with that. Um, and I know Styles and Heart is the big project. I'm also working in there too. I'm working on the Bog Bridge and. Um, tomorrow night proposing to go in and clear the trails, open the trails up, the existing ones on the High Street side. Um, you know, it's just, it needs consistency. Um, I started promoting um that I visited Tucker Wood and Wyman's Meadow on Facebook and. Even people two, two doors down from the entrances to their particular park didn't know it existed. You know, we need awareness, we need signage, we need, we need people to know that they're there. You spend all this money. You know, let people get in there and enjoy it, you know, picnic on the river or you go in and go running or just a walk or or anything like that. Let's get them used.
Great, PAX, PAXR, obviously I'm from Pax and Rec, right? Paxer.
Gina?
I think all of the CPC buckets are important, but being Pax and Rec, my hat goes to, to Pax. Um, does it mean I have less hat for the other projects?
Gina, there's a, there's a question in the chat, uh, Joanna. Uh, how does the CPC Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, as well as any other pertinent groups work together? To plan, decide and implement a plan specifically with regard to, I have to drag it down. Uh, Recreation Historic Preservation and Open Space. Do you want to try that answer, Gina?
Okay, I'm just reading her, her question here. I think she had a two-pack question. Let me find the other part of it. Okay, maybe somebody else's question. Okay, let me. How did the CPC Conservation Commission, Historic Commission, as well as other pertinent groups work together to plan, decide and. Implement a plan? Jen, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I mean, I could take this if you want, Gina.
Sure, go right ahead.
So I would say that the Conservation Commission and the Historical Commission could be brought together to talk about a a joint application to the CPC. The CPC typically doesn't work to plan things. It would typically receive an application. Um, to do a project. Sometimes they will get involved in planning things, but for the most part, they sit back and wait for an application to come. But I would say the Concom Chair and the Store Commission Chair um could get together. Uh, and or the two boards could get together and talk about some potential projects if they wanted to.
I think that's well, it's open space.
Yeah, I know that there's been some discussions that that I've had with a few other um. See, like CPC members and uh where it was like, like we we meet together for these uh community preservation committee. But it's all, like, we're talking about, like, the funds, we're talking about this, but it would be good to have our committees get together and know brainstorming. And I, and as Chair of the Historical Commission, I'm more than happy to do that.
Great, thank you. Um, and each of those committees that you mentioned all have representatives on CPC. Conservation um and historic and recreation um open space. They, we all have representatives. That serve on CPC for. Okay, anything else on passive recreation or? Where to focus efforts to increase playgrounds, Sam?
Um, I have two uh comments related to uh physical activity, sports and so on. Uh, I don't know, I don't know if the um community preservation funds can work together with the school district. Uh, but the track at Bridgewater Rainham is in desperate need of repair. It's a pretty much a disaster area. Uh, given the limited availability of the university track, it would be nice to have. A track facility in town that people could walk on. There are many people who do not walk on trails uh or streets and they like the quietness of the track. And my observation during these COVID times is that the track was regularly used over there because it was one of the few places that was open last year. So again, I don't know if, um, I know it's on the school district radar, but I'm sure way, way down there priorities. Go ahead.
Just to answer that before you go on to the next part, because it is regionalized property. We couldn't use the CPA funds for it.
Okay, um, the second one is about bike lanes. I sent a um. Comment over to Jennifer Burke about a week or so ago. I haven't heard back from her yet, but. I know it's difficult to put bike lanes down on many of our streets because they're so narrow. But the existing main thoroughfares in Bridgewater, Route eighteen, one oh four. Uh, east to west, north to south, those roads have already existing wide shoulders. And it would seem to me we would at least make biking more conducive. If we were to improve those by restriping, making the shoulder lanes more obvious, putting the bike shadows down. And doing a little street clean to get the gravel up. And that might at least encourage people to use those shoulders for biking.
Have a, there, there, just recently, I I know there was a um statement from the uh Community and Economic Development. Um, Department in Bridgewater where um the town had applied for a complete street grant. Um, and I think this year we actually um, we received that grant and then part of it is, I think that that's a focus of part of it. So I think that's something that um, I don't have the information in front of me, but I think if you look up the um. Community and Economic Development or or talk with um Jennifer Burke, the um. She, there is information where there is funding, looking at um Broad. On Broad Street and Main Street and bringing in the vice, the um. The complete streets, which um includes um benefits for walking, biking, cars. So that's something that I think is going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Jen Goldson has, and then Matt has his hand up again.
But can I just clarify, unfortunately, bike lanes as part of streets would not qualify for CPA funds. There's been some court cases about sidewalks and it would be the same kind of a thing because it would be considered transportation as opposed to recreation. You could do bike paths and like rail trail type projects, but not something on the street.
Great, thanks, Chen. Um, Matt?
Matt?
Thanks Gina, and and you probably hate that I'm at this meeting because now I got a whole list when it comes to recreation.
I'm glad, I'm surprised you're back for another long meeting after the council last night.
Yeah, I got beat up last night, but it was okay. Um, so talking about passive recreation, the first thing that comes to mind. To me is uh looking at something at the nip. Now, as a frequent user of the nip, what I can tell you is increased activity, the boat ramp is just too small. And I I realize it's an expensive undertaking, so let's just put that aside. And I was thinking about something about park benches uh that sort of face the water. Um, it's such a beautiful view. If you go onto Facebook, you can routinely see people posting pictures of the sunsets out at the nip. But there's literally between the riprap that they've put down to keep people from swimming. There's literally no place to sit down. Either the grass is overgrown. I know there was controversy about some of the um trees being cut back, but. Would love to see an idea or something to enhance uh the beautiful resource we have down at the nip and the nip parking lot. Uh, moving on, I I'm so grateful to the planning board and to your committee that made sure that we finally had access to the Jenny-Letted Park. And although the slide went by quickly and I couldn't tell. Um, I'd be a little disappointed if all we can do um is put in a trail. I would love to see a a small playground put there uh with the addition of all of the homes on that side of town. It's surely lacking uh recreation, particularly for young kids. So I'd love to see that idea expanded if it's not already being thought about, and I'm sure it is. My next idea would to be consider adding basketball courts to the softball area of town. Um, we built those softball fields for the girls. Um, I'm sure, I think it's Charlie Simons that I see Charlie listed on this. Um, you know, basketball courts, it's such a popular sport. It's extremely difficult to get time. Um, you can drive by any time of the day on Route eighteen and see those parks. Um, uh, excuse me, the basketball courts being used. I would love to see something over there that ties in something for the young girls. It's an extremely popular sport. And now I'm not trying to segregate and say they have to go over there, but it would be nice to add that to that recreational complex. And I think it would be a huge win for the town. The next one is sort of a comment uh that's related to Jen's presentation. I, and I, I obviously it's a rule, but I'd like to, the CPA to figure out if there's a way around it. Um, when it says it won't fund athletic turf. Um, but you'll supply, you know, I would say grading of sites and sprinkler systems. And with water shortages and bans and fertilizers being used. To support um fields all over town and what they're doing to our natural resources. I kind of find it ironic that we would shy away from supporting athletic turf. Uh, versus putting in, I I say something like Flag Street. Where we have the beautiful soccer fields, but that's not done without fertilizer and massive amounts of water. So I would love for the committee to figure out a way, whether it's communicating with the state, you know, and. I don't pursue it myself as an environmentalist, but um I'm not sure if it's worse um one or the other, but it seems strange to me. The last thing I'll mention is the Tool uh Park on one oh four. As the Chair of the Fire Building Committee. I just want to be assured that we will keep the CPA involved one hundred percent. Carlton's been a great asset. Um, as we've looked and tried to narrow public property down as potential sites for future fire station. And I have always had the idea that uh to Carlton's point, I would love to tie in a trail to the Murray Farm as part of this project. And I'd like to see a small recreational park um as well as additional parking at that fire substation. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um. Charlie, Charlie Simons, I think you're, you're still on here. Um. Could you address quickly the the nip at basketball courts at the softball fields as as Matt stated asked about? Got to put you on the spot, Charlie.
No, sure. I mean, I'm, you know me, I'm a basketball guy, but the problem is the land availability down there. Um, the only land that we really could do something with. A, is on the other side of the brook at the far end. Of the softball fields. Um, we're only allowed to use a small field down that end because it was close to the brook. We'd have to go through conservation to get um a whole nother situation to get up and into the Highland. Uplands, I should say. And to be quite honest with you, I don't think that's the safest area to be. Originally, before the playground was put in, years and years ago, before they built the new high school. Uh, we wanted an indoor facility over in that site. And uh the the playground was determined to be the best thing for that site. So. I I would find it very difficult to put any kind of money into courts at that site because of the fact. There is some land that's. Uh. That, you know, you might be able to get one quarter in there, but I don't think you can get two. I mean, I could certainly look at it, but. I don't know. I I really have to look at, never really thought about that, putting courts in there. Um, because usually when you do courts, you like them to be fairly close to the street. So they're well lit up or you can see in there who's there. That's one of the safety things you got to look at nowadays. Um, kind of why Rainbow Zen kind of went out of a style and there was a lot of different things down in there because. All the uh brush grew up and and it was a tough place to go. So I I I'd be willing to look at it for sure. To see if there was an area where we could get a quarter or two in there.
Great, how about the the nip? Now, the boat ramp itself is actually state-owned, correct?
Yeah, that's all handled by the fisheries, uh wildlife and fisheries, so we really have nothing to do up there anymore. And uh, you know, you have a parking lot. I, I. I don't know if, I I assume it's town land. I know wildlife and fisheries take care of the actual ramp and all that kind of stuff. So, I don't know. I think. It's tough to include a lot of things. Um, you know, as far as courts, um. Because you do have to have parking if you, you know, like a Legion, it's it's just such a congested area. We have two courts there. And there's summer leagues going on and there's little league games and there's no parking and it's crazy. I, I think the town would be more out to look into any town home land. That had some site, a, a, a site that we could, you know, build into it, you're packing and fairly close to the street. That's, I I think that's what has to be looked at.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um.
Gina?
Yeah.
This girl, this girl.
Yeah, we have a.
Is there another question? Go ahead for, there's four questions.
I was just gonna see if there's anything else on. Recreation, the passive or playgrounds, we, we do have a couple of questions about cemeteries in the chat right now.
Yeah, Gina, just on recreation, just a question to Charlie. At the property at the softball fields, now Carlton had mentioned to me one time. That there were trails in the back there from the girls' softball fields. Now, that land, Joe Starr's land, isn't it? Was there supposed to be a trail somewhere?
Um, this, the, when it was designed and when it was built, there is, there was a four-foot wide walkway behind the fields. That goes around in between the softball fields. That is kind of overgrown, but there is a dense pack material under that. But what you were talking about originally, I believe, is when he donated the money, he wanted to have a playground built. But what you were talking about originally, I believe, is when he donated the money, he wanted to have a playground built. But it was determined that we used his money that he donated and tied it in with the project at Marathon Park. But as far as the actual land behind there, I believe it's a wetlands issue. Yeah, the best part of that whole property as far as uplands and what they talked about passive recreation trails was what I was talking about before on the other side of the brook, way down the back field on the smallest field. And we would have gone through with that in the beginning, but there was objection from the Conservation Commission and we felt that it would have held up that whole project. So we stayed away from having, being granted to the uplands. But for walking and passive recreation, that there is land up there that we would have, you know, you'd have to go through conservation and get the approval to do something. And I don't
Does it come out to Star Road?
I don't, I can't answer that, to be honest with you.
If you, if you go from like where the pond used to be, where the playground, just the pond used to be in that area, if you walk straight back, it will, because we did this when we were kids, it does go, come out by the Ming Farm on Star Road. So way in the back, we got in trouble for doing it too. My uncle wasn't happy we we cut that back, but I, so that's how I know it does go there.
The trees were a lot shorter than two, Gina.
Yeah, that's true. I was a lot younger too. Okay. If nothing else on recreation, did I see another hand up? Steve?
Yep. Yeah, you know, a lot of the points made here tonight, just excellent arguments again for a full-time paid park steward that we desperately need. A lot of these ideas, unfortunately, they're great ideas, they're not new. A lot of these have been kicked around for the last ten or fifteen years. We nearly need that position to be able to put a priority on which of these parks and which of these projects are going to get a priority and then just try to take care of them one at a time. I had such great hope when the part-time position was funded last year. And I know COVID, among other things, kind of acts that. But as far as, when people look around and ask, why can't we find these parks? Why, I'm just finding out that it's next door to me. You know, universal signage is one of the items that we have fought for for the last ten or fifteen years to no avail. And it's really just such a disservice to us and the new people moving in that they're not even aware, especially these times of COVID with so many people at home and looking for walks, that we have six beautiful parks in town to be able to enjoy. So my hope or push would be to get this position funded again, to be able to get these projects more efficiently taken care of.
Great, thank you. And yes, signage is a big question. Not really a question, just a big desire. I'd like to just point out that even though the Recreation Commission has become parks and recreation, there's been no added budget to, monies to the recreation or help. So we have Charlie, who's paid by the town for Paxton Rec, and we have one other person that's paid to our enterprise fund. So even though we, and I'm speaking with my Paxton rec hat on right now, even though through the chatter, we became Paxton Rec, there's been really no directive yet, and we're still hoping, and we're hoping for that person that Steve spoke about too.
Gina, can I interject something?
Sure.
I'm quite sure, and I know for a fact that the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager are quite aware of this and are actually working to try to fund that position again. I had a meeting last week. They know what's, what needs to be done. You have all these volunteers out there that have been working on these parks for years. And I give them a lot of credit, but I, I think they're realizing now in town that they need to spend some money towards this. And they need to get a part-time steward to either work with the rec department and under community development. And I, and I think the times come that that position will be filled, funded in the next budget and actively looked to filling. That's, that's what I'm getting from my meeting.
Gina, this is, Gina, this is Carlton. We haven't really hit, we've hit a couple of things, but I have a question on in this chat about where to find information about previous projects. You can go to the Coalition, the what's, Community Preservation Coalition, they list all projects for all towns in that location. So you can, it's easy to find on the web. There's also a question that has about, to do about cemeteries. And a question about signage. Let's see, let me go.
Yeah.
How do historical cemeteries fit into CPA? Cemeteries, we can restore under an application to restore historic cemeteries, clean stones, that kind of thing.
Okay, plus Okay, plus we've done an example is Mount Prospect Cemetery. We funded CPC funded to restore the fence that, back to the type of fence that originally was. There's, and we also have somebody else that just reached out to us today asking about a similar project, but they need to do some research. There's another question for cemeteries too. Did I go past it? Hold on, let me go back up here.
While you're looking, Steve Rogan.
Right here, would it be possible to work with Bridgewater CPC at obtaining funds for water installation and fencing for Jenny's Hill, Jennings Hill Cemetery? I believe that's on Plain Street, correct?
That's correct.
It's plain and high.
About this, we'd have to talk about the specific application as to eligibility. I'm not sure about that particular piece. If it had a historic fence that we were going to refurbish, it might be eligible. If it's a new fence, I doubt it.
It's barred, it's barred wire right now. It's, it's, yeah, part of it's barred wire. There's not much left of the whole backend of it, and the separation between that and the adjacent property is hard to find. People have been walking and trampling over it.
And people have been stealing the cast iron fence.
Yeah, there's pieces stolen over time. So this would be, this would be a new buy. This would, this would be buying fence that would be, you know, be something that would be appropriate for the cemetery, but certainly it's going to be new because there's nothing there to replace.
Yeah, I think we would have to see images of what it looked like, et cetera. But not to belabor it, but I think we can certainly discuss this further with you guys.
Right. I'm sorry.
Hand up.
Okay. Okay, Janet?
Hi, hi, I just was touching based on the cemetery situation. When you had your meeting last February of twenty twenty, right before the COVID hit, I had talked to you about a meeting that I had, my pet project was wanting to restore the first cemetery, Summer Street, because it is the oldest and I wanted to know how to proceed with that COVID hit and everything went, you know, on the wayside. So I still am interested in that and I, I can't remember all the steps that you said, and I know you touched base on some of the steps. But I, it's right there by the college. It is the first cemetery and it does need some work to restore. And there's a lot of history there and how would I proceed?
The first thing is to find the owner and work with the owner in terms of a potential project.
Yeah, I think the town is the owner now.
I think you're right.
I think so too.
So in the, in the chat box, if people want to know what the database is, the website has been posted by Steve Rogan. You can copy that and put it into your browser. At some point you'll find the projects.
To count, contact the town. Do you know who I would start with?
I, I would try just with Jennifer Burke. And she can, probably if it's not her, she can direct you to the right person.
Okay, thank you.
Application, applications put in through the town.
Just to say about cemeteries around Bridgewater is that we do have a lot of cemeteries, very historic, very beautiful cemeteries that people either just drive by or, but as a, as a place to walk and everything like that, I definitely encourage people to get out to the cemeteries. The work that's been done at Jennings Hill is great. But yeah, no, it's, it's a great historical resource for our town. So thanks to everyone who has interest in that.
Great.
We're starting to run up about fifteen minutes before we said we would end this piece. So if other people have other thoughts, that, et cetera, we would love to hear them.
Okay, I just, if there's nothing else on recreation, I think there's just a couple more questions that we have we can put out there quickly for, to get input on. Because I, for one, would like to hear what people think on, I mean, I've wanted to hear what you think on all of them anyways. But the next question is, should we focus on family and preservation where we need to have available sixty-one, sixty-one A, et cetera, ends that may be ripe for development? So I guess the question, main part is, should we focus on family and preservation? I, we have a comment.
An answer from Janet on yes. There's a question, answer in the chat that says yes.
Yes, Janet, you have your hand raised too?
No.
Oh, okay. I, I for one, think that we should. I would love to see all the family and preserved in Bridgewater if we could. Any other thoughts on that?
Gina, could I just ask?
Sure.
Quick question. So obviously I'm in favor of that as well. However, I guess I would ask, is the CPA prepared to actually preserve that farmland? So when it abruptly goes up for sale, are we in a position to be able to enter into negotiations or acquire that land, or is there a process that we need to go through to be ready for that?
We could, and I can't remember the term off the top of my head. Jenna Calton could probably say one of the other members.
Jen is the expert. I'll let her answer.
Right.
Jen?
Yeah, is that okay, Gina? You know, all, all I'd say is it's better not to wait until it goes up for sale, you know, under chapter sixty-one A. If farmlands are enrolled in the tax abatement program, the town does have a right of first refusal. If it can come up pretty fast with the same money that the developer's offering for fair market value. And I know that you tried to do that with the Calthrop property and it's really tricky to pull it off. I think the better kind of planning initiative would be to prepare ahead of time and negotiate with the owners of farmland properties to restrict those, you know, to buy an agricultural preservation restriction or a conservation restriction like you did on the Murray Needs Farm before it's actually going up for sale.
Thank you, Jen. I think if I, if I could just follow up to Jen, that's, that's really what I wanted to hear is when you're looking at current property in Bridgewater, is the CPA being proactive in reaching out to those sixty-one A landowners and letting them know that we are interested in a town in acquiring that purchase or purchasing that property? Would they please at least give us an opportunity before they, you know, bid it out or put it on the market to a private seller?
I would say that the CPC is really a funding entity rather than a initiator of project ideas. And so the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission would be really the entities working, hopefully with, you know, trying to put these deals together.
I think we, I think we are required to have a one-year warning of pending sale. Or taking it out of sixty-one, whatever the chapter sixty-one it's in, we need a one-year heads up so that we can actually make sure we have any interest in and also money to do that. We have, we have, we have over three million in the bank right now.
Matt, to further answer your question about reaching out, nothing has been formalized yet, but different members of the CPC at different times have talked to to one of the farms in Bridgewater who has expressed an interest in the restriction, as Jen, Jen just explained about it. So, yes, CPC doesn't go with a funding mechanism, but we have talked to a landowner about the restriction. So it's kind of like a two-way street.
Sure, thank you. I guess my only concern would be, and yeah, it was if this property that's not using the tax abatement under that chapter and section that has large parcels of land that they may be concerned to put on the market, if there's a way to identify that. But I know that's for a separate group, but just trying to be active about, you know, what is potentially buildable land in Bridgewater that we may be able to purchase.
Great, thank you.
I see Pete has his hand up.
Pete, thank you.
Yourself.
Well, to that end, if we all kind of agree that, that they're, if they're agricultural land that could easily be developed, we want to be proactive in acquiring them or at least acquiring the preservation restriction.
Pete, you're, you're really distant. We can't hear you very well.
Let me log into my phone.
I'll take an opportunity here to say while you're logging in. Anybody that wants to come before the CPC to discuss a project, you're more than welcome to let the Chair know so that we can put it on an agenda and entertain your thoughts and interests, et cetera. And maybe help a little bit about it with eligibility. So anybody that has something they want to put before it, come talk to us.
Great.
Okay, Pete.
Can you hear me now? Is that any better?
A little, not much, but.
Let me Go ahead.
So I'm wondering, so doesn't, doesn't the committee have a community preservation plan that, that targets specific parcels within the town that, that would be require at least a preservation restriction on? Hasn't that worked in kind of assess what, where perhaps?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. The plan really refers to other planning documents like the open space plan, open space and rec plan that would be, you know, updated every five years as well to, to focus on whatever priorities came out of the open space and rec plan.
Right, so the, you know, the roadmap is really kind of there.
Right, we have, we just completed a five-year plan last year, so there's goals, et cetera, that we've already established and one of those goals is preservation of agricultural lands.
I think what Pete's asking, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, are you asking if there is a document showing what lands are available?
Yeah. I mean, does the community preservation plan have that level of?
No.
No, it really just refers to the open space plan, which does have a full inventory of all private properties. Yeah, and the protection level.
If you follow the steps, you'll get back to.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank.
Yeah, good, thank you. Jen, somebody just put that site for the chapter sixty-one, protect the land can't be reached.
Worked for me when I, when I went through the link.
Oh, okay.
No issues.
Okay.
I'm there now.
Try again, Florida. Okay, anything else on family and preservation? Okay. The last, last question is other buildings and structures within the town that you think need to be preserved? Anyone?
Did you click it?
I'm sorry.
No. Okay.
Thank you, your question, yeah, absolutely, this this town that need to be preserved is um. And I can, I can also put a link up to the um. It's the the MacRist database, which is like a list of all the historic buildings, um, which generally is any building that were like um. Nineteen twenty-five or prior. Um, there's a lot of history, a lot of buildings, so it's like people can bring forward um. Potential CPC uh applications on a lot of historic um buildings, um. Like I said, I'll I'll share the link. So that and um it need to be set, the historical commission is um working to update a little bit more.
Great, thank you.
And and I will add to that, I think the state. Rules are that anything that's older than fifty years old potentially could be eligible. Uh, the town has decided that anything before nineteen twenty-five uh for certain issues is historic. So. It's important to understand the historic pieces, the McElwain, the old McElwain factory, the Thomas McCann factory building. Is probably the most significant historic building in town right now. Even more significant than the McElwain School. And I would love to see that preserved. That's just my input to this.
Me too, um. I'm just putting into chat, um, a couple of people have asked how to get in touch with the CPC. I'm putting in. Right now, my email, um, I just checked to the person that used to maintain our CPC email and. We don't, I just checked, I didn't think it still existed, um, I would like to set up a new one through the town. But in the meantime, I'm putting my personal email in. And also you can reach out to me via that or our Facebook page too, Bridgewater Community Preservation. You can message through that, um. So either way. Um, feel free to to reach out and. When we get our our regular CPC email, uh, we can post it on uh the Facebook. And the other community preservation page for the town. Okay, anything else for the public hearing? Can anybody from the CPC have any questions or thoughts or any other public? Okay, hearing done, I would like to thank everybody that participated, um, who listened to the the presentation. Who offered their thoughts, um, hopefully we planted some seeds. In your minds, things that can be done, um, I think the discussion was wonderful. Um, and again, I thank everybody for their participation. So any comments from? Other committee members?
Thanks for participating.
Yes, I agree.
I'll motion, I'll move to adjourn the hearing.
Okay, second.
I'll second Steve.
Okay, um, Josh roll call.
Gina?
Yes.
Carlton?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion was approved.
Great, okay, the public hearing is now closed, everybody's welcome to stay on for. We're going to have just a a quick shortened shortened meeting, um. Okay, we're a tad tad late from our agenda for what we we said, um. First thing is, we're taking things out of order than how we usually do it, just because we have people on. For certain things here, um, first is, we have an application for the pickleball courts, um. That Jen put in her presentation to be built at um the senior center, the six pickleball courts. Uh, everybody was sent out the application. It's, I'm just trying to look at again for the amount. Okay, the amount being requested is. And I apologize, I should have written it down, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Well, that's that's the total of the job, but.
Okay, take, take off twenty-five thousand. Okay, I'm sorry, a hundred and twelve thousand, two thirty-five. Okay, any discussion on that, any comments?
Well, we we can just, we can comment, we can't discuss until we're under motion, we're under motion.
Oh, okay, that's true.
My apology, uh. I've read it through, I think it's one of the better applications I've seen from the Parks and Rec. It's pretty thorough, and we got it a week ahead of time, which is fantastic. Uh, and I didn't see anything, I sent a comment that that was included in our as a goal in our. Twenty twenty-four um. CPA plan, so it's it's part of the goal, it's there, uh, and it's great, um, and I would uh suggest we fund it. Do we want to, my only question on that would be is we want to just round it to uh. One, one, two, two fifty.
Okay.
Because the money gets returned if they don't use it, I just, I just worry a little bit about nickel and dimes.
Uh huh, uh, do I put that into a motion, Calton?
I would amend the motion to say the funding would be for one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that, Joan.
Okay, any discussion on the application?
I think it'll be a great addition to uh recreation opportunities for seniors in Bridgewater. Much needed.
Great, I thank you, Bill, um. And for. The public that are on here, we did have a number of. Letters in support from different townspeople, different town boards, um, in support of the pickleball courts, um. As Jen's uh. Has the a lot more knowledge than me about pickleball courts, I only heard about them a couple of years ago. Um, she's had five years knowledge of them, so she's she's ahead of me, um, and. I think it it's great for the town, um. So many, it's a probably the. Biggest up and rising sport around, and so many people from Bridgewater go out of town to play, so it'd be nice to have the courts in town.
Well, Charlie, what's your schedule, and the other thing is, is that we would need to send you a. I don't know, call it a grant agreement or something, something details as to what we, because you you know, we expect images at the end of the gate day and. Some reports, etcetera, so that's all included in the application, right?
Yes, you you have. Pictures in the app, you mean?
No.
Yeah, at the end of the project, at the end of the project, we need a report and images of us. And a sign needs to go up that says it's a CPA project, CPC project, that kind of thing.
Okay, do you pay for that sign? I want to get it, Cal, don't get upset.
We we had, we had some somewhere that I don't know.
Stand up there with a sign that said, that'll say, thanks a lot.
Twenty-four seven, okay.
We'll do whatever it takes.
And they're only up under construction.
Right, or I. I for one think it's it's great, I see different places, um, that Oliver Oliver something Park and Middleborough or the Herring Run. Has to sign up as part of their regular sign, and it says funded by community preservation money, I see that in Easton too. So I think it's nice if you have a a sign, you just note that it's funded, but that can be discussed later.
Well, absolutely, I'm, I just want to pipe in for one minute, if there's no other questions that. I want to thank the people that wrote letters of support and the people that, um. I I I guess when the, when you want to get things done, you gotta kind of. Uh, give it a little grease, and and the squeaky wheel gets the grease, I I I really think it's going to be a great project, I think. With what I've heard about the future of the senior center and what the town manager would like to do out back. Of the senior center, I think this is going to add to a really nice situation down there, and. Um, I think it's great for the seniors, uh, you know, me being one of them. Um, I I I just think it's someplace and it's down there, and it's going to be a really good thing. And uh, but I thank those people that have given us support.
Charlie, I think also the town should know that the already twenty thousand dollars has been invested uh from the capital plan to do the foundational work, right?
Correct.
Twenty-five.
We have five and we had twenty, so that money will go into, has gone into the grading, the site is ready to go, you asked about a timeframe. Um, I'm waiting, once we get this approval. The the paving uh with maybe a little bit fine tuning is ready, the site is ready to be paved. Um, so this can happen real fast, that was one of the reasons why, you know, we want to get this in mind so that when the the asphalt plants open up. Um, we can, we can get this going right away, and um we'll have fencing going up, so I'm certainly hopeful. That we could be up and running um as early as July. If everything goes smoothly.
Okay.
I just want to say, I I've been down to, um, I bring my daughter down to Grace Beach in Kingston. Um, it's a great little beach, and they actually, they have a pickleball court. Next to a community playground right on the beach, and um, the times I've been down there, the the court's been full every single time.
Yeah, there's, there every town around, Cav is building new ones, a bunch of towns down the Cape. It it's just unbelievable, I know Naples, Florida has eighty courts, eighty courts. And I could, I know it's a heavy retirement community, but um to have six courts at that site. Um, I'd be willing to bet that they're going to be used heavily. From what the different people in town to tell me and where they go, and uh, but I think it can be a really good thing. Not just for older people, but townspeople, and once this, we get out of this COVID stuff, and I I think it'll be a real good. Good combination with the senior center and what they want to do, uh, to get more people involved.
Great, I agree, um, thank you, any other discussion, Calton?
Yeah, one more question, Charlie, what's the town manager planning behind the building, we don't, is it recreation, whatever?
No, it from from our minor discussions, and. When we walked the site and we looked at the site, he envisioned that because the back area there is not used at all. Uh, for anything, there's a shed there, uh, maybe a a storage, I mean, a uh. A a road coming around back where they might make a delivery, but he would like to make that a green area, that's what I was told. Meaning possibly a pavilion, um, with. In other words, not not just to be able to use the indoors of the senior center, but out back, use that as a green area. I know there's a trail that goes up there that was, I think, done by an Eagle Scout project a few years ago. Maybe have a bocce court, things like that out back, that's that's what he he was talking to me about it, potentially, and um. I I think that that would obviously be a phase two type thing, where he wanted to get the courts built. But he wanted that to be a congregating area outside for seniors.
Thank you very much, that's very interesting.
Yeah, he was, he had a conflict tonight, so he couldn't be in this meeting, so he asked me to. If I, if you had any questions.
Okay, great, thanks, Charlie, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, if none, um, Josh roll call.
Gina?
The, uh, the motion was for a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty, Calton motion to round it up, um, yes, Josh?
Carlton? Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion was approved.
Great, thank you, um.
Gina, Gina, who will prepare the the document that we send over to the town man, town council for approval?
I will, where it's just our, plain and simple, this is it, we don't have like big stipulations on it. So I can just get that off to him. Uh, just that we've rounded it up at this meeting, we voted, we approved it for the rounded up amount.
Thank you.
Yeah, more complicated ones, I I. Again, I, that's a a shot and sweet one, so I can get that off, Charlie, I will get that off to him this week, and it. If you can ask him to, I'll I'll ask him in the letter to see that it gets on the next council meeting.
That'd be great, and um I also want to let you know that a letter should be coming from accounting. Um, stating what we had left in the fencing project, I think it was around eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, Lori Greenie was out of town. Um, but I did send that email to her, and she will tell you uh what you have left in that to be returned to you. And I appreciate your funding me on that project, everything came out great, and um, all set.
Great, thanks, Charlie.
Send us pictures, don't forget to send us pictures of the product.
I will, I will, I certainly will, and like I said, would you like an update, like every time I do something down there, you want another little snap I can send you?
That'd be part of the agreement.
All right.
In two weeks?
Okay, thank, thanks so much, Charlie. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes from February twenty-fourth. Did everybody have a chance to read them?
I haven't had a chance.
Or do you want to continue that for the next meeting?
So just we postponed it.
Okay, um. Okay, the next thing we have, discuss the public hearing input, um. We can do that now, or continue that for, I think we had great, great suggestions and great thoughts presented, um. To us and great, great questions to us.
I I would simply ask, what are, what are the major take homes from the conversation? You know, what what areas are we, what the town wants us to, people that participated want to focus on?
I'm like, the people weren't aware of the housing, it seems like that had some interest, that like, just. Like the fact that there is an element that can help housing. So I I I'd be surprised that we we might see a little bit more of that.
Right, I was surprised the people that didn't realize that housing was was part of it. But that was good, it was brought up.
A couple, a couple of people mentioned, um, parks and trails and were concerned about signage. Uh, issues, uh, that's, I mean, I don't even, I didn't even realize there were six parks in Bridgewater. I think we've got to do, or the town has to do a better job of marketing these parks and trails. Whether it's on the website or through hard copy or or what have you, uh, I, that's really, I guess, not our job so much. Uh, but but I think the signage review is really important.
I I agree with you, um, Bill, because I think it's, um, I know in the uh master plan committee, that was something that like I. I was really advocating for, because it 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 not only does it direct you to these open spaces, but all these open spaces. Have a history, and they can make it interpretive, and instead of just going to a trail, why are you going to that trail, that trail might. Be like where the original fairgrounds are, or it might be where American, uh. Gentlemen was, so I think that, um. I'm glad people still want them, it needs to be an important, um, it needs to be addressed, the the signage. Cohesive signage in our town.
Uh huh, I agree, um, at some of the parks that are. The signage when you first go in, explaining the park was done by Eagle Scouts. But once they start to fall apart years and years later, there's no upkeep to them, um, and I think. That should be addressed, um, I I've been looking, Jean. Started a a walking group, and there's probably anywhere from four to eight of us that go every Monday. Um, we've hit different places, and a lot of the towns like Plymouth, you can go to there. Um, we've hit different places and a lot of the towns like Plymouth, you can go to there. And it's right from the town community preservation website. You can link in and actually see the history. It's a. A a little blurb about it tells you the history of the park. Uh, most of them have the trails. I saw, I picked this up last week in Plymouth. We could do, I know it's, you can't see it good. Um, I can't even see it. I am holding it. It's a flyer and it says, welcome to the town of Plymouth Open Spaceland. Open it up and it, this happened to be the Eel River Preserve and you open it up and it's a whole trail map. You know, something like that. I, I know it's not a CP, CPC expense. But in something like that, even simple things like that, um, and putting it on. The town, the community preservation webpage with links. I think that's, that doesn't cost anything. And we should do that to promote the parks. That seemed to be a big thing is. Signage trails. I walk the packs and. It's a good thing there's smaller packs around with the group or you guys would be sending out the search patty for me. I've actually called Jean on her cell phone and said I'm lost.
Like Plymouth too, um, there's. Um, I think it's through the town of Plymouth, but they have a healthy, um. Healthy Plymouth and then they have the different places where you can go and walk in Plymouth. And they're all mostly, like Gina said, historical sites.
And we need some uh signage that uh discusses the history of these uh parks and these trails. You know, in some key towns like Concord and other places, they have these large signs with the history. Of the, of the trail or the tailing uh background and so forth. It would be wonderful if we could have some of those. I'm sure they're very expensive and I I don't guess we could fund anything like that through the CPC. I don't know.
One, one of, sorry to interrupt. One of the mitigation factors that we're discussing about like uh Iron Works Park um is the interpretive signage and um. I know that myself and uh David Moore did the um, the previous sign about um the park. And I offered up my um, my skills. I'm a graphic designer as well to uh to work on that sign, the the signage for Iron Works Park. But I think, I I think there definitely needs to be like a cohesive, like a a a red thread that goes to, through all our parks. So that, like, you know that you're in a town park and you go to them.
Branding is very important.
Yeah, I know that the town tried to do that a few years back, um having to do it like where they tried to brand and they're talking about signage. I think unfortunately they got bogged down, which what could have been branding for the town and signage, they got br- got, they got bogged down in. Letterheads and what the uh, what it would look like. Actual signage, so that kind of failed, but um I think it is, it's very important.
Um, last year, I belong to a women's club in Bridgewater. It's the oldest women's club. It was established in eighteen ninety-eight. And last year we had Steve Black come and it wasn't, was one of our largest attended programs. And he spoke about all of the parks. He's got the most knowledge, I think, around, other than Harry probably, wherever Harry is. And he gave a whole presentation about all of the parks in town. Now Gina and I went to Tucker Wood. Is that the one?
Yes. Yeah.
We didn't think it was much, but I guess it's more than what we thought it was. We have to go back.
The power lines?
Yeah.
Back there, it's, 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 it's beautiful back there. There's a great view of the, the town river. It's, it, it's not, it's not huge, but it's beautiful.
It's one of the best vistas of the river I've seen.
Well, let's check it out this week, Jean.
Money right now. We'll have to wait until.
So to move this along a little bit, Harry and uh Bill's talk, Harry, do you have any thoughts on the uh? Priorities that you may have heard?
Um, not really, but on the signage and everything, if you get onto Camp Titicket. An Eagle Scout just finished making a larger parking, off-street parking lot for six vehicles.
Yeah, it's nice.
New gate that's wider so that the ambulance can fit in to the campsites. Another Eagle Scout did all three campsites over and put new barbecue grills in. Eagle Scout did the kiosks, so all the signage down at Camp Titicket is all brand new. You ought to go down and look at it.
A newer sign even, Harry?
All new signage.
Oh. Oh, good, cause I was there a few weeks ago.
He cut down trees, made the parking lot so it hold six cars off the street. Nobody can park in front of the gate. Uh, he did a fantastic job, so.
Yeah, the parking was really great. And they give a history of Titicket on that sign.
Well, I, the, the history of Titicket is much different than I understood. Uh, Steve has talked about the Metakisit tribe, that was one of their burying grounds. And they have a huge interest in that area uh because it was land they owned. According to deeds that I've read, they owned it before the uh normal deed that we talk about for Bridgewater. So there is a na- native indigenous history that is not well represented down there yet.
It is also their um summer residence when they were.
That's right.
Yeah.
They used to go there in the summer and then head off to their winter grounds later, so.
Right, and it was more.
The burial ground, I've already found it.
Yeah, well, the burial ground was ex- uh, yeah, excavated in two nineteen thirty or so and some of the. Uh findings were sent to the Harvard Museum and they have been reserved, the, the uh. Bones that were recovered have been returned in part, so there's a big history there that needs to be sold. Uh, and and that was a Pocono, Poconut tribe that uh came north. And the Metakisit went south from their ni- normal uh winter grounds, summer grounds. So that's just a, a point that we need to make and so the signage, I think, is really important. Thank you, Harry.
Yeah, I just had one little, I guess, last little add-on to the history of that. Um, I know that, that big dip down, that's where um. That there was a ship manufacturing that was done and uh, and that was done during the colonial times or already in the seventeen, eighteen hundreds. Um, so even after colonial times, but um. Prior to colonial times, the tree, the trees that were used were um. Were very important because like that, like the need, the need of um people, they use those trees to make their. To make their boats prior to the colonists coming over. Very deep history there.
Neat. Um, Jen, somebody asked a question in the chat and said, can that signage be added? With a special note of the Native American connection there?
So signage really isn't eligible for CPA funds? The only signage you can really fund is the one saying that it's funded by CPA. As part of your admin. Um, so if you did signage, it would just be needed, need to be done through another funding source.
Okay, okay, yeah, the question was. Where it has a Native American connection, but it's, it's still a no.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the verbs, you're not actually preserving. Historic resources with signage and you're not rehabbing it and you're not creating them and you're not acquiring them, so it doesn't fit with any of those verbs. It's helpful for. Promotion and understanding and education and, but you're not directly preserving or rehabbing this, the resource, so that's why you can't do it.
Clarify for me Steve's comment with this mitigation discussion for the removal of the dam and bridge. Signage has come up as a mitigation, but what you just said CPA can't fund that kind of signage.
Right.
That's good to understand. My, my four takeaways were, number one was housing was a major discussion. Signage was a major discussion. Open space sixty-one lands was a, a major point that was made. And the last one was preservation of cemeteries, uh and we do have some incredibly. Historic cemeteries and by the way, my relatives are buried in the first cemetery, so. I would o- opt for that preservation for sure. But I may, I may have to recuse myself because I have a connection.
I don't know if mine's buried.
Mine, mine. Okay. CPC members, anybody else wanna comment on their, their take? Bill, did you comment?
Yes, I commented on signage and parks.
That's right, you did. I'm sorry. Uh, Joan? Would you like to comment your takeaway?
No, I'm all set. I think everything was really, I, I thought tonight went, went really well. Um, I don't have any specific comments for you.
Great, thank you. Um, there is a, a question in the chat that we didn't address and I don't know. I have to check to see if Chris had jumped in, is still here. Um, if she's not, I can get the answer to her or one of us can. She had asked if the reclamation of the land where Rainbow Zen Playground is located is su- suitable project? I'm not sure what she's asking. Is the reclamation of the land where Rainbow Zen Playground is located a suitable project?
If you mean reclamation in ter- if you mean reclamation in terms of removing contamination, no.
Okay, that's, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that's what she means, but I'm not positive, but we, I, we can follow up on it with her. To make sure. I think we answered all the other questions in there. Um. It's just like, we missed that one or I missed that one.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think self, health and safety type things. You know, are, are a little bit uh dicey, but Jen can answer that a little bit better, but I, I would be a little bit concerned. The major piece is to get, in my mind, is to get the uh Jenny Leonard Park up to speed.
Me too, and I would, I would like to reiterate, I think Matt Rushden had said it and he's, he's left us, but. I would love to see. A playground there. It was originally set up as a playground, um. Unfortunately, and it was a nice little playground. Unfortunately, after all these years and because it was hard to get to. No packing or anything, it, it just became completely vandalized, graffiti, uh. Just nasty stuff.
It had a nice pavilion back.
Yep, there is, there was a nice park.
That's on Flag Street, right? You're talking about the one on Flag?
It's on Cherry Street. Oh, the one Rainbow Zen is Flag Street, but the one I was just saying I would like to see a playground put back in there. Is Cherry Street.
Um, Rainbow Zen, that's state property too.
Right. And Cherry Street is Jenny Leonard.
Yeah.
Right.
Cherry Street is town property.
On the Jer- Jenny Leonard, that is supposed to be taken care of by the developer as part of the project.
It's all been cleaned out. It's all been cleaned out. The, all the old. Equipment, the remaining of the pil- uh pavilion and everything's been taken out. Now it will have to be. Decided upon what to do with it.
And the developer is not responsible for building playgrounds.
And the Jenny Leonard sign is over at um the Highway Department. It was laying by the building.
Okay, now who brought it there? The town people, the town work employers, employees?
What, who brought the sign there?
Yeah.
I don't know. We just saw it there that day that we were, we did our walk at the Iron Works.
Okay. Okay.
Speaking of. Can you repeat the area that you were talking about, please? I, I missed that.
What, the, no, the Jenny Leonard, the sign for Jenny Leonard Park. Is sitting over at the Highway Department. They saved it.
Oh, okay, they saved it. I thought you meant somebody brought it there to be restored or?
No, no, they saved, they saved. They didn't just toss that with all the playground equipment and everything.
Okay.
Is it historic?
It was whatever they put up when they made the park.
I, I'd say probably back to the sixties or seventies, Calton. It's not real historic.
I would say that we also have uh some people that are waiting to hear, maybe have dropped off now about the uh, the next. Uh agenda item and it is getting late, so I would encourage just to move on.
Okay, we can continue this uh discussion later um to prioritize what, what we're looking at. Okay. Yep, any other new business? Okay, old business brief updates, ministerial code, the change to, for CPC's um administrative code. That was approved last night, was it last, last night at the um town council meeting, so that did go through. It changed our administrative code from advisory to ministerial. Um, so that's good. That's one thing off of my, our plate. The next thing, the Central Square Congregational Church Grant Agreement and deed restriction. I've reached out to Jennifer Burke because we had sent her, Jen Golson had sent her the. Grant agreement to have it reviewed by town council and the town manager. Last I heard that a month or so ago was the, the town attorney Rollins and. The town manager both had it to review. I wrote to her last week again to see where it stood and I haven't had a response yet. Um, that's the grant agreement, uh and it, Jen Golson is working on the deed restriction. No, I'm sorry, let me correct that. The church is working on the deed restriction. Um, the grant agreement that Jen wrote is what Attorney Rollins and the town manager reviewing. So.
Do we have a date certain when they will complete that review? It's rather important to get that done.
Yeah, and I think we gave it to them over two months ago now.
We, we did. And I, I wrote to her for. After February meeting and she said that it was under review. I wrote to her again. Last week, I think it was last week, asking her for an update and I haven't heard anything, but I will. I'll write again and say that we need to get that going.
Do we need a vote? That they need to move by a certain date?
Right, the deed restriction. Will be done before we get the grant agreement.
That's not acceptable to me.
Right, so I will write to her again. I'm wondering if she didn't answer last week. Because there was just a lot going on there, but I'll touch base with her again this week.
Are you, um, are you also copying Michael Dutton and Attorney Rollins? That might help move it along if.
I think I copied, I think I copied Michael. But he was away last week, um, and I didn't copy Jason Rollins, but I will, good idea, good suggestion, Jen.
I suggest you send it to the, I suggest you send it to the town manager and copy the c- community economic and the uh Jason Rollins. We need to push at the top.
Okay, sounds good. I will do that. Um, next thing Charlie Simons hit on it. Was Legion Field Safety Fencing Project, um. He mentioned it, there is money left over, um, after all the bills were paid. He has written to her, Lori Guarini from the accounting office, just to confirm that everything is paid. And for her to respond back to me, once she does, um. We'll just need to vote her, accept the money back again. Um, so we're just waiting for Lori to get back to us. She was out. Last week when Charlie wrote to her. Anything on, any of those? Uh, I think Barbara, you're, you're still here. Any update on the deed restriction? You sent the deposit, well, the church sent the deposit to Brian Pfeifer?
Yes, we, um, we sent the deposit to Brian and then the contract with Brian um was signed by the head. Trustee of the church and I've talked to Brian a couple of times. He wanted to come down.
Trustee of the church and I've talked to Brian a couple of times. He wanted to come down to the church. Um this week and he says he has to include in the deed restriction. Um pictures of the back of the church. Um the exterior of the back of the church. Um they don't do anything with it, but he said it has to be included. Um the photos of the entire church around all four sides. Um he wanted to do this last week, but he he had um real issues with his computer. He lost all everything he had on it. Took him four days to get all his information.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, it was a very scary thing for him and uh he did retrieve all his information, so it set him back a week. So I I'm thinking that he's planning to come down to the church next week. I will meet with them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Gina, you might indicate that the church is already in the e- email to Michael, et cetera. Indicate that the church has already uh engaged the uh services of Brian Pfeifer. And that part of the project is moving forward rapidly so that we can actually get the grant agreement done.
Okay, great. I will um. Okay, the other discussion on the updates, the holdup on committee updates, we didn't have it on the agenda for next meeting. Um where this is, we anticipated a a longer meeting. Um the remainder of old business?
Yes, I I have something. Uh this is actually a little bit of information for. Oh, my.
Did you just ring the bell, Bill?
It was Barbara. She was ringing a bell for us.
It's from the church.
Yes, exactly. Um I was looking through the Bridgewater, Massachusetts Town Code. I was looking for information on signage. Uh we we don't really have a signage code in Bridgewater. That's why the signs look as the way they do. Except for the historic district. And Steve, I found a reference to the historic Iron Works District on page two thirty-four. Of the Bridgewater, Massachusetts Town Code. And um it says, it's a fairly short uh entry. It gives parcel numbers. And it says that it's pursuant to Mass General Law forty C. Mass General Law forty C is the state statute that governs historic districts. So I I have no idea who is in charge of that historic district. It could be the Mass Historical Commission. But nothing can be taken, nothing can be removed from that site. Nothing can be changed without some approval. Uh by a commission or by the Mass Historical Commission. So uh maybe that's to your advantage. Uh somebody needs to follow up. Uh I know that we do not have jurisdiction. Over that uh historic district, but it is a beside historic district.
And that's the town code?
Yes, it's on page two thirty-four. Of the Massachusetts Bridgewater, Massachusetts Town Code. It's a document.
That's a zoning code. That's not the admin code.
Oh, well, it's the town code. It's.
Well, there's two codes. There's the admin code and there's the zoning codes.
This is three hundred and four pages long and it's on page two thirty-four. It's the first document that pops up.
It's the admin code. I know is three hundred and two pages because I was looking at it the other day. I didn't read all three hundred and two pages, by the way.
No, I didn't either. I scrolled through it and found the reference to the historic Iron Works District. So um. You 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 need to check that out. Uh I I hope it helps you in some way.
Yes, no, I'll definitely look at that.
Uh the the other point, the other point being made about that is that the Mass Historic Commission. Is a co-signer of anything that happens down there. So they're they've been in the loop for quite a while.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And the Historical Commission has uh has requirement or has. Has to submit something to them. Uh they're not the final decider, but they will be heavily engaged in whatever mitigations are required.
And they are very strict, as we know.
Well.
Very, very strict.
Okay, um. Our next meeting is. April twenty eighth. I was starting to write today, May. I'm just getting my my minds mixed up. Everything's flying so quick, but it's April twenty eighth. I have one last thing to add. It's kind of new business, but it's kind of just our announcement. Unfortunately, well, unfortunately, unfortunately for for Jennifer, Jen Golson. We received notification that when her contract is up on May first, she's not interested in. Exercising the option to renew. Um nothing to do with Bridgewater itself. Um she's doing that with all our cities and towns that that she works with um for administrative thing, so it's. It's nothing we did to chase her away. Um it's just something that. She wants to concentrate on housing, which is her forte. Um. I for one will be completely lost without her, so April twenty eighth will be our last meeting with Jen. So. I'll do my planning and thank you then, but I wanted to let the committee know and. We're planning hopefully to talk with um we will talk with the town manager at our options, whether. We hire another consultant or what route to go. But I just wanted that out and now I don't want to say on April twenty eighth that in two days. Jen's not with us. Um so I just wanted to make that announcement. Jen?
Yeah, thanks Gina. I appreciate you making that announcement tonight. And I do, as Gina said, I want to know. It's nothing personal at all. I'm really. Making a change in the business. I've been focusing on doing master plan work, housing production plans, working with housing trusts. And community preservation plans, but I'm really getting away from the admin support um roles. That I've had with a number of communities. And so it's really just a strategic business decision, has nothing to do with you guys. Um you know, I've been working with Bridgewater since I think two thousand seven or eight. I was not working with you a little bit while um you know, for a couple of years in the middle, but for the most part, I've been with you guys for. You know, the longest of all my CPA clients and I will miss you a lot. Um but I just want you to rest assured, it's nothing to do with you all. You're a great client. I love you all and. Um you know, I'll miss you and I hope you can bring me back to do some work with your housing trust or if you have any other kind of more. Planning work, community engagement, that kind of thing. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'll be here next month.
Thank you.
I'll bring the beer. I'll bring the beer.
Zoom zoom beer.
We can have virtual cake and cookies. That's right.
You go.
We'll do that. Uh thank you, Jen, for for that and for everything you have you have done. I for one couldn't have done it without you um way back when. If there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
Okay.
Okay, Josh roll call.
Gina?
Yes.
Carlton?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion was approved. The meeting is adjourned.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting, great public hearing. Thank you and see you soon.
Thank you, visitors and guests.
Yes, yes. Bye-bye.
Bye.